Okay, call the meeting to order. Bart, would you mind doing our invocation, please?
Lord, thank you for this time we're able to come together, Lord, and just go through our city's business. I pray that you'll just give us wisdom and knowledge and discernment in every decision that we make. Thank you for those here. I pray that you'll just bless their lives richly. Be with those that were unable to make it for whatever reason, Lord, just keep them safe. And I pray to just God as we go through this and bless our city as well in Jesus' name. Amen.
Dan, enjoy me to pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Paul.
Here.
Drennan.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Row.
Here.
Inman.
Here.
2023-2024 audit, discussion consideration possible action on the 2023-2024 audit.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Chris Heim with HBC CPAs and here to present on the 2023-2024 audit. I'm going to start off on page five. I'm going to go over our two reports and then hit some of the financial highlights for the year and then open it up to questions at the end. So, I'm going to start off on page five, which is our auditor's report, which is why we're here. First paragraph just states that we have audited these financial statements. Second paragraph states, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." So that is a clean audit opinion. That's the best audit opinion that we can offer as auditors. So what is exactly, does that mean? That means that the numbers that are presented subsequent to this report can be relied upon by the council, by outside credit agencies and other outside agencies as well. So, obviously, doesn't mean we went through every single transaction or we audited the balances that are in the financial statements here that we'll present on. So, clean opinion on the audits report, which means the financial statements are reasonably stated. So, from there, I'm going to go to page nine. And there's four financial highlights here. I'm going to read them at first, but then I'm going to go through the financial statements and just show you kind of where they are within the financials. So, first bullet point, the city's total net position increased by 1.5 million. So, that increased net position of 1.5 million, that is essentially the net profit of the city as a whole. So, including the utilities and the governmental funds. Bullet point number two, the city's governmental activities experienced a current-year increase in net position of 193,000, while the business-type activities experienced a current-year increase of 1.3. So, total governmental activities, all the governmental funds, 193,000 increase, again, net profit. Business-type activities, 1.3. Third bullet point, at June 30, 2024, the city's governmental funds reported a combined ending fund balance of 1.6 million, which we'll talk about here in a second on the schedules. And then, at the end of the year, the unassigned fund balance for the general fund was in a deficit net position in the amount of 389,000. So, we'll look at that at schedules as well here in a bit. You know, that fourth bullet point is a finding because we're at a deficit in a general fund. However, you know, as we talk about and look at the numbers, I think, you know, we're making big strides in progress in making that number go down. So, we'll look at that a little more here in the upcoming schedules. But from now, I'm going to go to page 12. And in the middle of that page, there's a schedule. It's a summary of your assets, liabilities, and your net position compared 24 to 23. We have total assets up at the top. We have total liabilities in the middle. And then, net position at the bottom. So, the number I'm going to focus on is the unrestricted net position, which, if you look at the governmental funds, we are, excuse me, we are at a negative 1.3. But that is down from a negative 1.7 in the prior year, so we're chipping away at that negative balance. When you go to the business-type activities column, the unrestricted net position, 4.8, which is an increase from the 3.5. So, again, you know, when we look at the 24 to 23 on both of those columns, governmental and business-type, they're both increasing. So, that's, you know, that's always good news. We're increasing those unrestricted net positions. And then, if you look to the far right column, that's the total of the city as a whole. It increased to 3.4 million over to the, from 2023 to 1.8 million. So, the unrestricted net position is just anything that hasn't been restricted. It's restricted to outside creditors or any other outside, or, I'm sorry, net investment and capital assets. So, and we'll look at that a little more in the details following this page. But for now, I'm going to go to the next page. I won't go too much detail here, but this is a summary of revenue and expenses. Same columns, governmental activities, business-type activities, and then a comparison of 24 to You'll see some big fluctuations in some of the columns, and those are going to be explained at the bottom. So, I won't go over them. I'm just going to, you know, highlight that if you see, for instance, just as one example, in the governmental columns, you see the operating grants and contributions increased on that second line item, increased by 91%. Well, then, it explains at the bottom what the 91% increase is. It says, "The 91% increase in operating grants and contributions mainly due to the ARPA grant revenue that covered public safety expenses." So, as you look at the fluctuations here between 24 and 23, there's some explanations at the bottom. But the one thing I will point out, which was in the financial highlights at those bullet points that we just discussed, the very bottom of that schedule, again, the profit of the city or the change in net position is at the bottom of that schedule. And if you look at each of the columns, specifically, the far total one, it'll say 1.5 million, which is that financial highlight, that first bullet point. 1.5 million for the total government at large, and that was 1.5 million in the prior year as well. So, good news for the city on that there. From there, I'm going to go to page 21. And look specifically at the general fund column. So, and again, we have, you know, our assets at the top, liabilities in the middle, and then our unassigned, which is a deficit of 389,000. State statutes say that you cannot have a deficit in your general fund, so that is going to be a finding, which will be at the end, which is a repeat finding that we've had past couple of years. But the good news is, if we look on the next page, which is page 22, again, the very bottom of the schedule, this is the revenues and expenses for the general fund. And the second line from the bottom says, "Fund balance beginning." Last year, we were 871. I think the prior year, we were in the millions. So, you know, I don't know where we're going to land, June 30, 2025, but if it's similar to June 24, we would be in the positive because you're at 389. This year, the change was 481 on that third to bottom line. So, we're very close. We've chipped away at that deficit fund balance, which, you know, we talked about could be a lot of years going forward. I think it's only been three years at this point. We're getting close to that, getting into the positive. So, although it will be a finding, we are making progress on that situation in the general fund. So, from there, I'm going to go to page 26. And again, I keep hammering the net position and the unrestricted, but, you know, it's not unlike an emergency fund where, you know, the unrestricted or unassigned fund balance are, you know, free for the government's use going forward. So, that's why I am touching on those balances. But again, we have the Public Works Authority here. We have assets up top, again, liabilities in the middle. And then, at that bottom, net position, we have an unrestricted net position of 4.8 million. So, again, not unlike an emergency fund, when you compare that to revenues or expenses, you know, as a percentage, you know, how many months are we looking at or what's the percentage when we compare it to revenues? That unrestricted net position is 79%, you know, almost 80% of unrestricted net position. In other cities that we do, that balance is around 30 to 50% within the business-type activities, so for the proprietary funds. So, very healthy unrestricted net position within your Public Works Authority. So, that's a positive going forward there as well. Next page is the Public Works Authority operating revenues and expenses. And this was in the financial highlights as well, but if we, you know, total revenues were 6.1 million, total expenses 5.2. And then, third line item from the bottom, change in net position, which is the profit of the Public Works Authority of 1.3 million. So, that was one of the financial highlights we discussed at the first, 1.3 million for the Public Works Authority, revenues over expenditures. From there, I'm going to jump all the way to the back and talk about our second report that we issue, and that's on page 77. This is what we call a byproduct of what we do. Our intention or what we set out to do is issue an opinion on the financial statements, which we did in that first report, which you had a clean audit report. The second report that we issue, if, as we're gaining evidence on those numbers, if we have any findings on internal controls or compliance, we would then issue findings within this report. We do have two findings, and we'll discuss those two. They are reported in that last paragraph and in the subsequent pages here. So, we'll go to page 79 to discuss the first one, which we've already talked about. You know, we cannot have a deficit fund balance within the general fund, so that is a repeat finding from the prior year. And we have management's response at the bottom here, and, you know, pretty much we hope to eliminate this deficit within 2020, June 30, 2025. The second item on the next page, page 80, we call this a self-reported finding. If you'll look on, well, you don't have to look at it at the moment, but if you wanted to flip back to page 64, that's a analysis of the budget. And on that schedule, there's two line items that were over budget. Let's see here, the public safety, 49,000, and general government, 98,000. You can see in management's response, and, you know, we agreed and we talked about this with them, that, you know, this was primarily a procedural, just, you know, not getting the, it's a procedural task, sorry, that they didn't get the transfers posted to the accounts and then caused the deficit fund balance. But, not deficit fund balance, but the negative variance within the budget. Again, it's going to be corrected in June 30, 2025 and going forward. But overall, you know, a clean report on the audit. We had the two findings, again, going to be corrected. And, you know, that's, I guess I'm going to open it up to questions from there.
We had nine findings last year, so having two is way down from our prior one, and I hope to get rid of these, so.
Yeah, I think at one point, we had maybe eight or nine, and really, a couple of those could have been multiple. We were combining findings at one point. So, yeah, great, great progress for sure, and especially, you know, the general fund, that unassigned fund balance one that initially happened, you know, kind of thought it would be five-plus years before you dug your way out of it. You're getting close, so that is, that's good news on that.
So, in general, you would say we're definitely moving the right way, well, for finances?
Yeah, the numbers, the numbers bear that out. Yeah, so, I mean, the...
I'm saying that more than, you know, people, they can understand that. They don't understand all the other stuff sometimes.
Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the numbers show that, you know, how healthy a city or a company is relative, you know, everybody will have their own opinion. But you're moving, you're moving in a direction that's healthy. I mean, no one can argue with that, so. When you're, when all those, I know I hit those unrestricted and net position numbers a lot, but when those are increasing, that's a good sign.
Anybody have any questions?
When will we be looking at the next years? I mean, the next one?
When will we be like, I'm already after D, so if we can try to get stuff to them earlier, I would love to see us at least by the first meeting in January is when I'd like to have it. But that means that we got to get it to him like October, November.
Yeah.
We're going to have to really hustle.
Yeah. We say...
Because we can't close out till, what, September is when we can do all our last final stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's why it's hard.
I mean, you have to close out essentially August before, because again, I think we've talked about this, you're on the accrual basis. So, July, August, you kind of have to look at two months beyond that, close out August, and then kind of go from there. If you close out by September, it's a task for sure. We can finish what we're doing in about 90 days. And we finished in about 110 days this time. But again, yeah, the quicker we get it, or the quicker the next auditor, if we're not doing it, you know, the quicker we get reports out, so.
It just helps us because there's common, some, there has been belief in the past that we were delaying some of this stuff.
Oh, yeah.
We've made it on record, I think, the last couple of years, we want to get it as soon as possible, so everybody can see and know where we stand.
Yeah, and I think we've discussed that as well. Like, you were in a position where it was very messy, and Crawford and Associates, them coming in to, you know, untangle some of that took a lot of time. And now, we're getting to a spot where it's a lot cleaner, which makes it easier to clean or close books. Hopefully Crawford and Associates isn't having to do as much on their end in not cleaning up things, which just accelerates the whole process.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Drive careful.
Okay, budget amendments, number six, do we need to take actions to accept that?
You could accept it. I mean, it's not much you can, yeah, so you can say, do a motion to accept.
I just need entertaining motion to accept the 2023-2024 audit.
I'm making motion to accept the 23-24 audit.
Motion's been made in second. Roll call, please.
Inman.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Drennan.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Six, budget amendments, discussion consideration possible action on budget amendments.
We do have two items here, budget amendments and transfers, but they are kind of all done together. So, I want to get this up, because I want to quickly go over. Our second finding that we had on this last one was because of our transfers. And part of it was that we did not do them soon enough, and so, we have them in here, and this will eliminate all of the ones that were on that by doing what we're going to do tonight. So, so I want to tell you a little bit, so, you know, people aren't wondering. On ours, on the public, the public safety one that we had, it was, it was our debt, our part of our loan, and we did it, but we didn't get the transfers done to show timely is what they, you know, if you don't, if you don't do them right when you're doing it. Everything was approved, all the paperwork was there, but the transfers were done after, after June 30. And, and kind of an accrual you can, but yet, that's not the best way to do them. So, that was one of them. One of them was our REC payment. We pay it on the utility side, and they transfer it to the city side. And I got to looking at it, I don't know why we do that, but it will be done again in this year's audit. And they're, they're always have thought, well, it's the police department. Well, the police department really only makes up 25% of that whole complex. So, 75% should have been staying with the LPWA. They've been transferring the whole 100% over. Well, that then caused us to be over $98,000, and now we have a finding. So, it really wasn't something, and we had budgeted on the LPWA side to pay it, but they thought we needed to transfer it because it was city. So, we're working through that. That was kind of a miscommunication, I think, over the years. It's been done that way for seven years. It won't happen again, and that transfers inside of these. And then, the last one is our sales tax.
Who's the they?
Crawford's was doing the transfer because she's always been told it's the police department.
Okay.
So, I finally just took her the whole map and drew it out and said, well, this is the police department, but the other buildings and everything are all utility.
Got you.
Okay, you know, so now we're, I think we're, we're there.
Okay.
25 won't change because we've already got the stuff set into motion the way we did it. 26 will, will work through it and get that changed. The last one is, over the years, and we've noticed this all the way back, and I don't think they considered it a finding before, but, but they've put it on the schedules. We get the LPWA's 25% of all the sales tax that come in comes into the city, and we just transfer it out. So, it comes in and it goes out. Well, we weren't showing that as a budget, budget in and out, because it's an in and out, and it wasn't ever the city's. You know, we just saw it as the bank account they brought it into. So, you will notice, one reason why these transfers that we're doing tonight are so high, is the transfers from the sales tax are in here. So, these are truly budget amendments. A few of these things, if we don't have them, we didn't have, we'd already done this new budget before we got this and went through all the discussion, so we'll definitely be doing some amendments to the new budget to show those in and out. They don't change anything other than the fact that it does come into a city account and it goes right back out. So, sometimes I think that's kind of silly that we can't just show it as an in and out. We will definitely not get a finding on it because it will be in there as an in and out. So, on this particular sheet that we're looking at, these are our budget amendments, but also inside these are our transfers. So, we're going to talk about some of those same things. So, we may do two votes, but the discussion's all going to come in this. Let me go back to what I was looking at here. Okay, so, on this first page that you're looking at, which is our general fund transfers, inside of the, these transfers are the state audit required that we transfer that 200,000 out, so we've done that. We have 150,000 in sales tax accrual, and then we have 752,000, and that is the 25% tax that I've told you about that's going to the LPWA. So, that is inside of this transfer. And then, there's also, and that's our transfers that went out, our transfers in are this, are the 100,000 for the REC building, the 300,000 that we're going to look at doing our transfer, that's going to do our final debt coverage. So, that's where I have talked to you guys, and I sent out that back sheet because it's inside of this one, where we're showing what we're going to be down to. And I wish that we were going to be at almost 500,000 for a profit this year, but we're not. We're at about 260, I can't remember exactly what it was, but it left 235. So, we want to clear it. At this point...
You could attribute that to lost revenue.
Oh, yeah. We, we just were down, just timing on things, 110,000 that came in the year before, they took out a month ago because they said they'd overpaid the year before, so they just...
And paid it to the wrong people.
Yeah, paid it to the wrong people, and so, they just, one day, yeah.
Showed 100,000, but they took it away the next, it's what it looked like, really bad.
So, that's money that you budgeted on, that you thought you'd got the year before, so not only you budgeted for it, and then they took it away. So, you get some real, you know, those are the ones that kind of hurt you the most. So, 420,000 was our original budget, and so, that left the 610 inside of this. So, then she goes over here and breaks some of these down. So, 630 was your transfers to the LPWA when she got it all worked out, but she went through all of these things before she figured out exactly what we had to transfer. So, then you... So then you could also see that we had to do a little bit of, in the parks, we had to do a little bit of increases and decreases, and so we don't have it in public, in our public safety. You can see that we had to do a switch between salaries and ambulance and overtime, so those had to be adjusted. And equipment in building operations, that went a little bit, and then capital outlay in the library. So those are some of our changes on the general fund side. We go to the next one, the LPWA. We're looking at some of the same things, the 200,000 in for the audit, the 25% tax accrual, which, and then the same other FY tax accrual. So you're looking at the same thing, now only an in on this side, and then the same thing as an out, only opposite, the REC building, because it affects both sides, and our regular budgeted transfers. And then the next one is the general fund, that we're going to move over to cover the deficit. It is a little more. When I talked to Dee, I was looking at going, it's in the 235 that we needed. I said, well, let's do 285 to make sure that, because we always never know, we're always basing off of May numbers, guessing at June, you know, and so she said, well, I would be more comfortable going 300. I said, I'm not uncomfortable with that. I really didn't want to go that much, but I'm, I'm okay with it. And then if we want to transfer it back in the new year, we can. There's no, there's no rule that says it can't go back. We may, though, want to have a little bit of cushion for a little bit. So I think that's, that should clear us. We should be at a positive balance. That will be exciting, because it, it's kind of hard sometimes to just work continually when you feel like you're living in debt. So I think it's a positive thing for, for all of us. I think it's a positive thing for our employees, because they, they get tired of, well, we can't do that, we're in debt. We can't do that, we're in debt. We can't do that, we're in debt. So I think we're getting there. So that is, that is the LPWA budget. The next one is our LPWA budget, and this is on electric salaries. We had to do a little bit of adjusting in their overtime, our distribution supplies, and engineering, of course. We ended up decreasing our engineering, but that's going to really come up here in the next few months. And, and we're probably going to have to do some serious talking about, yes, we needed to be in an 80%, where we talked about somewhere at 30, because we know we're getting ready to have to put some money out. I mean, that's, that's been our whole purpose, is to get to where we knew we could start building this base for our substation and start doing some of these things. So our pool, we've had a little increase in it, our pool supplies, salaries, and then our capital on our building was a decrease, and our convenience fees were an increase. So that's the funds on those that had to be amended. Airport, just increasing our hay lease and our interest, and then increasing a little bit on maintenance and repairs. Street and alley, increasing our taxes and our revenues, that's a good thing, and then, but also increasing our maintenance and repairs. So police bond fund, increasing our revenues, so budgeting our transfers to the city and our transfers to CLEET increased also. So our, our tickets have been, I mean, they, we, they've done what they said in their budget, which is great. LPWA donation fund, so we have got in some additional donations that she did for increase, and then she's going to do an increase in miscellaneous appropriations, because a lot of that's going to be our donations that came in for fireworks and all of that that are going right back out. So grant funds, our fire grant, our CDBG, our SODA, those have all been adjusted. Emergency one cent had to have a decrease in revenues, but an increase in interest. So our money that we have put in the bank is, in our CDs, is making a difference. So that's a good thing. Interest, our insurance trust, again, it's an increase in revenues. So those are all revenue increases. So those are the things that, that we're looking at. We should eliminate those findings, which is a good thing, so we're hoping that we don't have any findings on our 2025 audit. So do you guys have any questions about those? We don't have to clear the deficit. That is something that's not an absolute have to. It's something that I think we're at the point of, just like I said, for the, for the benefit of our community, for the benefit of, of you guys working hard, our staff, I, I think we're just, it's time. I mean, and we know we're at a place we can do it.
I think it'd be good, PR wise, for everybody.
Yeah.
Well, I think then, if you're willing to accept the budget amendments, that's just getting a motion on that, and then the transfers, it's all inside of both of these sheets, so.
Can we do that in one motion? Wouldn't you do that?
I think you probably could. Do you want it in two, because it's two items? Would that make it better?
Two? Yeah.
Okay, we need a motion-
Make a motion, we approve the budget amendments.
Okay.
Second, as suggested, yeah.
Motion's been made, second, to approve the budget amendments, roll call, please.
Paul?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Yes, and we need to entertain a motion for the transfers.
Entertain a motion that we approve the transfers.
Second.
Motion's been made, second, it, roll call, please.
Emmett?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion, we adjourn.
Motion's been made, I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Paul?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Emmett?
Yes. Yes.